Thank you very much for that. I always enjoy her rendition. I don't really have any remarks tonight, but the other evening I neglected to do one thing. I neglected to play a a video that the town manager had produced for us to introduce all the department heads. So I'm going to ask Adam to please play that at this point.
My name is Adam Chapdeline and I'm honored to serve as your town manager.
Hi, I'm Julie Brazil. I'm your town clerk.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Bodie. I serve as your superintendent of schools.
My name is Michael Mason and I'm the chief financial officer for schools.
My name is Douglas Time. I'm your town council.
Hello, my name is Michael Cunningham and I am your deputy town council.
Hi, I'm Christine Bonjourno and I'm your director of health and human services.
Hi, I am Jim Feeney and I am fortunate to serve as your deputy town manager for operations.
Hi, my name is Sandy Puler. I am deputy town manager and director of finance.
Hello, my name is Karen Malloy and I serve as the town's director of human resources.
Hello, I'm Kevin Kelly and I serve as your fire chief.
Hello. My name is Julie Flaherty and I'm the chief of police.
Good evening. My name is Michael Rodamacher and I am the director of public works.
Hi, I'm Jenny Rade. I'm the director of planning and community development.
Hi, I'm Greg Walters, the director of facilities.
Hi, I'm Ida Cody, the town controller.
Hi, I'm Paul Tierney, director of assessments.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Marshall, the town treasurer collector.
Hello, my name is Dan Sheehan. I'm the interim technology director.
Hi, I'm Andrea Nicolai, your director of libraries.
Hi, this is Michael Burn, I'm the director of inspectional services.
Hi, this is Joe Conley, director of recreation.
It's good to know all the faces behind all of the different departments that are there to serve us and to help us through every day in our lives. And I have a question of any town meeting members who have not yet been sworn in. I'd like to let me know somehow. Let's see if they could use the, oh, it's not available yet.
John, I can run the raise hand in Zoom if you want.
Oh, okay. If anybody has not yet been sworn in, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom and I'll swear you in. Okay. We can assume everybody has been sworn in. All right, good. That takes care of that. I recognize the chair of the board of selectmen is Stephen DeCoursey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting is set forth in the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Monday, May 3, 2021, at 8:00 PM.
Ms. Brazil, you want to second that or Mr. Foskett? If anybody objects to that, please use the raising feature in Zoom. If not, I'll consider it a unanimous vote. Okay, we're going to consider that a unanimous vote. Have any announcements or resolutions? I believe Mr. Ruderman has an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Ruderman, precinct nine and Arlington's representative to the Minuteman School Committee. I've had a number of requests to find out if Minuteman, the kids in the culinary shop in particular, could provide baked goods, cookies, cakes, pies, the things that they have brought for us for several years to great acclaim and make those available to us for our snacking during time meeting sessions. Unfortunately, all of the outruns are canceled due to COVID. However, Minuteman has been running what they call their soup group where you place an order with the kids on a Friday or over the weekend and then you come out on Friday. They fill it and it is available on orders close on the Monday following and you pick it up at Minuteman on Thursday. What I will do is I will email this link to the members once it is published by Minuteman on Friday. They had agreed just for us for this week to expand their baked goods offering to include some of the favorites that we've had at town meetings in the past. Unfortunately, they can't be with us this year to provide a bake sale for our town meeting, but they would, they would like us, they would like to provide us with things and they appreciate our continued enthusiasm for their offerings.
So, Michael, we go online, order something and it shows up at my door?
No, it does not. It shows up, it shows up on a table at the driveway in front of the Minuteman High School building in Lexington. You place your order online and then before Monday when orders close and then you show up at Minuteman on Thursday, some particular hours to be in the email to pick it up.
Oh, okay. Very good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Any other announcements? If anyone has an announcement, is raising still up, Ms. Wayland? Anyone else has an announcement, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom and let us know about it right now or any simple resolution honoring somebody that would be taken right now.
Mr. Moderator, we have Beth Maloffcheck who raised her hand.
Okay. Let's bring Beth up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Beth Maloffcheck, precinct nine. There's some disappointment that we didn't see our director of diversity, equity and inclusion.
We'll find out why Gillian couldn't get here. We can ask Mr. Chapdeline, perhaps she was unavailable when they did that, but we'll have her do a quick hello for us next time, if she can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I can address that if you wish.
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Chapdeline.
It's really an organizational chart matter with Ms. Harvey having been promoted to director of a division within the Health and Human Services Department. So she serves as the director of diversity, equity and inclusion under the direction of Christine Bonjourno as director of Health and Human Services. So for the, for the video intro, we included department heads or department directors as opposed to division directors. So no, no slight at all for Jill, just the way the organizational chart works.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay. There are no other hands up, so we're going to close announcements and resolutions. And Mr. Foskett, let's take three off the table, see if there are any other reports to be received.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that Article Three be removed from the table.
Second.
Thank you. If anyone objects, please use the raise hand feature. Seeing none, are there any other reports to be received? Any other departments have a report to be received? Okay, seeing none, let's put three back on the table.
Mr. Moderator, Charlie Foskett, precinct eight, I moved that Article Three be laid upon the table.
Second.
All in favor, please. All opposed, please use raise hand feature. It's unanimous vote. How the heck did I do that? It's unanimous vote, I so clear, three is on the table. That brings us back to Article Seven. We're in the midst of debate on Article Seven. Bylaw amendment rock removal requirements. When we last spoke, I think Ms. Memmon had the floor, and she may have had some questions that were outstanding. And I believe Mr. Heim may have gotten some answers for her. This is true, Mr. Heim.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Doug Heim, town council. I want to let folks know first and foremost that I believe Fire Chief Kevin Kelly is joining us tonight for this discussion in case folks have any specific questions for the Arlington Fire Department who administers blasting regulations and issues blasting permits in Arlington. Based on a review, it appears that there were a total of 10 permits for seven sites over, I believe, the last 11 years. So there have been 10 permits of blasting issued within roughly the last decade for a total of seven sites. With respect to Ms. Memmon's second question, I did a survey of decisions with respect to blasting, basically looking to see if there's any local bylaws regulating blasting. I didn't find anything that would suggest that communities have different standards for blasting, which is not what I would expect. The biggest thing that I sort of saw was that some communities that are a little bit more rural have some special regulations with respect to what are called like large industrial facilities, but nothing that would apply to Arlington. Chief Kelly and his captain in charge of, in charge of blasting did inform me that the way the state regulations work, there are certain ways in which density is impacted differently in one community versus another. In other words, when an actual blast is conducted, the denser community is, the closer the instruments that basically measure seismic logical activity and noise are going to be to the actual blast itself. So greater care has to be exercised by blasting companies. Different techniques might have to be used in a denser community because the instruments are going to be located on neighboring sort of property lines much closer to the blast than they would be if the next house was, you know, three quarters of a mile down the road. I hope that that answers your questions. Thank you.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Mr. Heim. So, Zering Amendment, precinct 21. So I actually was looking at this a little bit further. Because of the density, I am nervous about voting for it. Initially, I was for it because I thought the state would have, this would be fine for our town, but having seen the concerns of the residents, I feel that more study needs to be put into this, especially in this area since we only done seven permits for, I'm sorry, 10 permits for seven sites in the last 11 years. I have seen Fly Rock is another thing that was mentioned in my review. I feel that that this, this stuff definitely needs to be something that we shouldn't rush into in Arlington because it is some, we're just a dense community. And I mean, I feel like I'm just practically living on my neighbors and that my neighbor's house because we just see each other's windows all the time. I can't see this really helping the heights very much. So I'm against this. I don't have any other matters to bring up right now. All I know is I know the, the select board did consider this with the disagreements that were found by the more, the citizens and I'm just against it right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Memmon. Mr. Yontar? Timor Yontar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Timor Yontar, precinct seven. I call the question on Article Seven and on all matters before it. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Yontar has moved to terminate debate. So this is our first chance to check this out. On your participate page, you'll now see a button that says second. So if anyone wants to second that, go ahead and hit second and second Mr. Yontar's motion. And okay, that motion's been seconded. Now we're going to clear those out and we're going to go right to a debate. So we now can, now you'll know what that second button is for, just that. That's going to be here for the rest of the meeting. So instead of having Mr. Foskett yell out second every time, which is fun, but we want, I wanted to try and get a more in the hall feel for the town meeting members to be able to yell out second as best we can electronically. So Adam is going to bring up a motion to terminate debate. So the same drill as the other day. Slowly navigate back to the voting portal page. If it isn't there, refresh it. If you can't use the voting portal, use the chat feature. Go ahead and use the portal page. If you can't use the chat feature in chat, just yes, if you want to terminate debate, two, no, if you don't. And if that doesn't work, you can call Ms. Brazil at 781-316-3070. So let's enable voting.
John, Julie Brazil, town clerk, it's 316-3071.
Oh. Did I say it back?
I think you said 3, 3070. It's 3071, my direct line.
I see that. All right, thank you, Ms. Brazil. So one to terminate debate, cast your vote. Two, if you do not want to terminate debate, cast your vote. Chat it in, yes or no. We don't need your name, we just need what your vote is. So we have 30 seconds. I think we've got everybody entered. And okay, let's close voting. Motion failed. We did not reach two thirds, so we're going to continue our debate on this article. These require two thirds vote, so the next speaker, we go back to the speaking list. Next, we have Carol Band.
Hi. Carol Band, precinct eight. I have a, I have a question. Have we ever denied a permit for blasting?
Fire chief?
Hello, this is Kevin Kelly, Fire Chief. I am unaware of us denying a permit. Now, we might have had a permit come in that was incomplete, incomplete application, but I am unaware of any denial.
Is there such a thing in Arlington as an unbuildable lot or a lot that has an existing house where blasting, if they wanted to enlarge it or tear it down and build something else, where the blasting would be inappropriate? Where it would affect the neighbors too much or the character of the landscape? Is that, is there such thing as an unbuildable or unblastable lot? Or is it, as long as you can make money, it's okay?
So Chief, I think the question is, are there any lots in town where blasting would be inappropriate?
I don't think, I don't think I can answer that question. I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Josh Lobel, Joshua Lobel. Josh is in precinct eight, I believe.
Hi there. This is Josh Lobel for precinct eight. I think this is an article that's probably well intentioned. I think that everybody realizes that blasting can be very annoying as well as chipping. Any kind of rock removal is very annoying to the neighbors. However, I don't think that this is necessarily the right solution. As I understand it currently, people can blast if they meet the current state regulations. What this article is trying to do is to mandate that they conduct a survey, a blasting survey beforehand to see if blasting might be appropriate. I'm wondering if anybody can answer the question about how much a survey like that might cost a developer? Just a rough idea, if it's, you know, $1,000 or $10,000 or $50,000.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Heim.
Doug Heim, town council, I unfortunately don't have a dollar figure. We did talk about it, the fire department in anticipation of this kind of question. Typically, what happens is the blasting company subs out to a firm that has to go out and try to contact each household within 250 feet three times. They have to take pictures of any existing conditions so they can record, you know, whether or not any damages is a result of blasting or not. So I wouldn't imagine that it's anything in the realm of $10,000 or $50,000. I would imagine that there's, there's, you know, not insubstantial cost, maybe in the thousands of dollars at most.
Thank you, and I apologize for not asking you that question beforehand. Wouldn't, wouldn't there be some requirement to do some kind of geological surveying as well to have an understanding what's going on in the bedrock?
Doug Heim, town council, it's a very good question, Mr. Lobel. There are three things that are required before an actual blast takes place. There's what this bylaw requires, which is sort of the inventory to try to get folks to think about what the lay of the land is, how many of others there are, what the condition is of those properties. There's also something called a blast plan and a blast design. The blast plan is what sort of they use seismic logical tools and things of that nature to sort of evaluate the conditions, whether blast mats, other things like that would be necessary, what the type of fly rock expectation is. So those things are required. They're not required by this bylaw. They'd be required before blasting, but the sort of technical component is required before you can blast. But that's not what's been asked to be a part of the prerequisite to any excavation, including chipping.
Thank you. I guess you may have noticed there are a number of people from precinct eight who are speaking on this issue and that's because there's a big project on Brunswick Road right now where they are blasting. And a number of our neighbors have said that in addition to the kind of just the unpleasantness of the sound and the dust, and I suppose maybe some fly rock as well, there's, there's unknown impacts of the blasting on the bedrock. And several people have said that in the past, they might have had a house they lived in for, you know, many years, 20 years or whatever, that never flooded and suddenly sometime after blasting occurred somewhere nearby, suddenly they had water coming into their basement. And the assumption was that perhaps that an underground water flow was impacted by the blasting. And I guess I'm not 100% convinced that we have the expertise really to, and not taking away from anybody's expertise at all, but that those things I would think would be somewhat complex to evaluate. And the concern from the neighborhood was, would you rather have, you know, two weeks or two months of annoyance of the sound or have permanent damage to your house? And the thought was, obviously, you'd rather put up with the annoyance a little bit for the sound. So for that reason, I think that again, I don't think that this particular article is out there to enrich developers or encourage development on places that wouldn't be developed otherwise. But I just don't think this is the right solution to trying to mitigate the annoyance factor. I do think it might be worth it for us to pursue, as Carol Band kind of mentioned, that perhaps there might be a way to somehow restrict future development on, on certain parcels because it's just too risky for whatever reason. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lobel. Elizabeth Carlton Keison?
Hi. Hello, Mr. Moderator. This is Betsy Carlton Keason from precinct seven. In, yeah, it trips up everybody. I wondered if there has been any past research or current consideration given to environmental impacts of the two different methods in addition to the public health and noise ones?
Mr. Heim, was that considered at all?
Doug Heim, town council. So with any project, one of the things that we voted on the consent agenda this evening was a revised stormwater management bylaw. That's not the exclusive purpose of it, but it, it is meant to try to evaluate the impacts of larger construction projects on stormwater. And, and both of these types of things, anytime you're changing landscaping. We also have an existing wetlands protection bylaw, which some folks have may have had some interface with. I know I've had a few cases that have been about alterations to the landscape that created some concern about the flow of water and things like that. But so, so they are considered right now already as is. In terms of which one is better, that's not something that I think that this contemplates or that we typically look at to say blasting versus chipping is going to have a specific environmental impact. It's more, what is the end change to the grade going to do? Are there concerns from a wetlands bylaw perspective? Are there concerns from a stormwater perspective? I know the environmental planner is, is on, if I'm, if I'm getting this wrong, she can shake her head at me, but I think I've got it right. Oh, she gave me the thumbs up. Good.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gordon Jameson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jameson, precinct 12. So here's what I've heard. People obviously can chip to remove rock, takes a long time, noisy and dusty. People can blast, as the town council told us. My brother-in-law in Connecticut is, his company specializes in site preparation for properties in a, in their town. And he doesn't like the blast. Costs a lot of money, it's dangerous. And so he tends to steer away from it. The properties there are usually larger in scope and size than here. Sometimes much substantially. As far as blasting having fly rock, every blasting site that I've ever gone by has a large metal mesh, rather heavy metal mesh on top of the actual area that's being blasted. a large metal mesh, rather heavy metal mesh, on top of the actual area that's being blasted. So I don't find that to be an issue. I inquired of town council based upon a question, I believe posed by another member the other night, about could we make the notification area larger? And I did some math. If you take 5,000 square foot property, and from each corner go out by 250 feet, that actually covers about eight acres. So that would be like notifying two-thirds of the size of Robbins Farm Park or more. So I think the notification area is fine. I think the purpose of this article is to prep, is to focus people on blasting, which I think most contractors don't want to do, just because it's dangerous. So I'm fine on having this in our bylaws, but I don't see that it's really gonna make, if the, if the purpose is to get rid of long-time chipping of rock, I don't think that's gonna be, that's not gonna happen. So that's where I am. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. Deborah Butler. Deborah, you wanna unmute and tell us what you have, you're thinking about? Deborah? Hello, Deborah, can you hear me?
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I have a great deal of concern about this article for two different reasons. One, Arlington is unusual in the amount of buried and forgotten subterranean water. I once lived 11 Plymouth Street and was surprised when 18-inch geysers came up from underneath it. And because I can do title research, I did so and found, as John Marr will remember, that in fact, the house was illegally built on a buried water movement and an artesian well, and is listed in the Water Resources Index. Up for many, for over 100 years, all potable water within a certain number of miles of the State House had to be registered. And it showed water was piped through 11 Plymouth Street from six different springs and down into the eight-acre reservoir behind where we're building a high school. The number of buried coverts, buried year-round water, and underground water that was removed from Mill Creek, which was once navigable by Batto, is quite large. And so the impact of blasting on unknown underground water is potentially rather major. Secondly, for decades, I received the Massachusetts Lawyers Weekly, and pretty much, almost every issue, there were reports on lawsuits resulting from blasting that caused damages to foundations and changes in the underground flow of water. And having listened to part of the debate and understanding that these sorts of concerns were not really addressed, I am not in favor of anything that makes it more likely there would be more blasting. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Lynette Culverhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Lynette Culverhouse, Precinct Eleven. My concern about this is that the potential to damage the foundation of abutting houses is pretty evident, and that there is only a 30-day window for residents to pursue damages from that. And often, damage as a result of blasting doesn't show up for months. And I think this is a concern about encouraging blasting in Arlington. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. John Warden.
Yes, John Warden, Precinct Eight. Am I there?
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you. This, the, the description we had earlier, earlier in the discussion was, well, would you rather put up with eight, eight weeks of continuous noise, dust, and vibrations? Or would you rather have it quick and lasting and have permanent damage to your house? And my question is, why should the people of Arlington who've invested, if they bought recently a lot of money in their house, have to put up with a choice like that? I mean, it's crazy. If you were, we're out in, where my son lives in Templeton, where the houses are long ways apart, and he's got a 10-acre plot, it's, it's different. But here, we're, we're housed, a lot of our houses, as you know, are on five or 6,000-foot lots, we are close to each other, we can see, we can see in each other's windows, et cetera. And I, I would suggest that this article be referred to a committee or something, so that, that there should be some comprehensive study to see what, if anything, the town can do to protect its citizens and, and protect our rocky outcroppings, which characterize every part of the town, you know, west of, west of Spy Pond, Mystic and Pleasant Streets, is full of rocks, everybody knows that. And, and, and it's, it's almost fully developed, there are a few parcels left. Reason they're left is because, and when people had a little more brains in their heads, they realized they were really unbuildable. And if, I think if somebody has to build, has to build there, which they don't, it's just greed, maybe they should build on top of the rocks. But I think that they really, we ought to have some serious research, but put this thing aside for now, and, and do some serious research about what we can do as a community to protect ourselves and our neighbors from the, these kind of, these kind of things, which really don't, should not happen in a densely populated community as ours is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Christopher Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christopher Moore, Precinct Fourteen. I move to terminate debate on the article on all matters before.
Okay, we have a motion to terminate debate. If someone wants to go ahead and second Mr. Moore's, second, it's been seconded. Okay, so we now have a motion to terminate debate in front of us. Adam's gonna go through his drill. Okay, so town meeting members, navigate back to the portal. In a minute, we will have a, the voting screen opened.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
I believe I opened the article voting and not the terminate debate voting.
Oh, okay. So let's undo that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Karlski. So he's gonna enable voting, so get back to your portal page. If you haven't refreshed, go, if you need to do it, don't do it unless you have to. We're also gonna open up the chat, so if you can not use the portal, and you're not able to use the portal, go ahead and use the chat. Yes, want, yes to terminate debate, no to, no to continue to discuss. Okay. So go ahead, press one to terminate debate, cast your vote, or two to continue to discuss. And then, if you have to chat, go ahead and chat your vote in, yes to terminate debate, no to continue debating. And we have about 30 seconds. If the last members want to go ahead and vote at this point, we're gonna close down voting in about 15 seconds. And, okay. Let's close voting.
Mr. Moderator, we have one verbal vote that's being recorded.
Oh, okay.
One chat vote.
Who's entering them tonight? Gabby or Julie?
Julie.
Okay, so give us the thumbs up when we're ready, Julie. Okay, we got a thumbs up, so let's close voting. The motion passes 87%, 87.5%, 189 in the affirmative, 27 in the negative. So once we run through the six, seven screens, we will be able to then get to a vote on the actual article itself. Okay, so we've gone through all seven screens now. Everyone can see how they voted. Now we can go to open the article, we're gonna actually go back to the article and go right to voting on Article Seven, the rock removal requirements. So go ahead and refresh your page, and Adam is gonna enable voting. So same drill, go back to the portal. Your cast your vote should be up, press one for yes to adopt the bylaw as written by this, in the select board's report, two to not. And if you can't do it, please use the chat, just chat in yes or no. And if you get the spinny thing, just go ahead and refresh, and it will get your vote right in there. As soon as I get the thumbs up that we have all the chat votes in, we're going to close voting. Okay, well, we can go ahead and close voting. And the motion fails, 62 in the negative, 62 in the positive, 172 in the negative. And it's a vote, and I sort of clear it, and that closes Article Seven. As soon as we go through the screens, we'll then close Article Seven, and we will go to Article Fifteen, which is our next open article.
Mr. Moderator, can you reconfirm which article we're going to?
Fifteen.
Thank you.
Everything between eight and 14 was taken care of on the consent agenda and has been disposed of, so now we're back up to fifteen. So town meeting members, you would have been given today a revised revised amendment by Mr. Meeks. So Mr. Schlickman has a point of order. We can bring Mr. Schlickman up.
Good evening, Paul Schlickman, Precinct Nine. If we defeat the main motion, do we then have to vote no action to dispose of the prior article?
There was only, there was no amendments on seven, Mr. Schlickman.
Okay, so the defeat of the article kills the article, and we don't need to vote no action?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, we have now for us, Article Fifteen, Domestic Partnerships. We have the recommended vote of the board, the select board, as printed in their report. And, Mr. Chaplaine or Mr. DeCoursey wished to address this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve DeCoursey, Chair of the Select Board, the Select Board supports the formal recognition of domestic partnerships to the adoption of the proposed bylaw. The recommended bylaw contained in the Select Board report was the version the proponents brought before the board for approval. I want to add that the proponents were made aware of potential legal issues as to the validity, validity of the bylaw, if the definition of domestic partnerships was expanded to include more than two persons. Reason for that is, as a town, any new bylaw is subject to a review and approval by the attorney, by the Attorney General. So doing part to that, for that reason, the board recommends So doing part to that, for that reason, the board recommends the version before you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Meeks, I believe you have a motion.
Sorry, I'm a new town meeting member. I'm not sure what I'm supposed to say.
You say, Mr. Mr. Moderator, I would have a motion to amend this article and I wish to submit it.
Mr. Moderator, I have an emotion, a motion to amend this article. I'd like to submit it.
And now somebody seconds that for you. So that we can discuss it. Okay, it's been seconded. Mr. Meeks, now you can address your article and tell us all about it.
Great. I think I have a video prepared. I don't know if you're planning to show that, but I'm also happy to.
If you have a video and you want us to show it, we can do that under your seven minutes of time. So we go ahead if you wish.
Yes, please.
Okay. So just give us a half a second to get that going.
Hello, my name is Amos Meeks. I'm a town meeting member from precinct three. And I want to introduce Article fifteen, which would create a domestic partnership bylaw in Arlington. This bylaw would allow people to register domestic partnership if they commit to mutual support and caring. If they reside together and intend to do so indefinitely. If they share basic living expenses such as food, utilities, household goods. If they are all at least eighteen years old, if they are competent to enter a contract. And if they are not married to anyone and are not closely enough related, that they could not be married under state law. The idea of this essentially is that rather than a marriage, which creates more indicates more of a union between people. This is indicating a commitment to family living together in the same household. And thus people in a domestic partnership and their dependents are treated as family in the eyes of the town. What this means is that they would have visitation rights at town operated healthcare facilities, which currently there are none. They would have visitation rights at town operated correctional facilities such as the jail. And a child's legal parent or guardian could give their domestic partner access to the child's school records. And access to the child, such as to take them out of school in case of a family at burdency. And then furthermore, the term spouse, family or marriage anywhere in the bylaws would explicitly include domestic partners. I think the main way that this would impact is such as in bereavement leave for the for town employees. In terms of how much leave they could get for the death of a family member. The main motion would create a fairly standard domestic partnership bylaw applicable to partnerships of two people. However, we have also proposed an amendment, which would allow the creation of domestic partnerships for two or more people. And it would also remove section ten. This is the section that equates spouse in other parts of the bylaw to domestic partners. There was concern raised about this from outside legal experts in that it may conflict with state law concerning polygamy. And thus be an issue when this bylaw is reviewed by the Attorney General. So for now we've removed it and we'll probably revisit this issue later on. And to answer a few frequently asked questions, can Arlington residents register domestic partnerships in other municipalities such as Somerville? Answer is yes. So right now, anyone you or me could go register a domestic partnership with more than two people in the city of Somerville. However, the town of Arlington would not recognize them. And so that domestic partnership would not get the rights explicitly explicitly laid out in this bylaw. While Somerville and Cambridge have passed ordinances allowing more than two people, no other town in Massachusetts has done so. And so if we pass an amendment allowing more than two people to register domestic partnerships, this would go in front of the Attorney General to review. So could she strike them those put the proposed amendments down if passed? Yes, she could. However, state law does not currently regulate domestic partnerships in any way, as far as I'm aware. They essentially leave domestic partnerships entirely up to the municipalities. So there is no reason to expect her. To find any conflict or issue with the amendments. Would this bylaw impact the town financially in any way? No, it would not. It's solely about the rights that I mentioned before and. Recognizing families as families. And does this force private organizations to do anything? No. All this affects is how people in a domestic partnership are treated by the town of Arlington. Any organization outside the town of Arlington can choose whether or not to recognize the domestic partnership. So for example, healthcare insurance providers deciding whether or not a domestic partner is eligible for someone's health. To to benefit, to benefit from someone's healthcare. Or hospitals outside of Arlington, allowing visitation of people with domestic partnership within Arlington. That being said, I suspect that in many of these cases, a domestic partnership registered in Arlington would, they would choose to recognize it. Thank you very much for listening and I hope that you will vote yes both on the main motion as well as the amendment to allow domestic partnerships of more than two people.
And that was Amos Beeks of precinct. Three Amos, yeah, you have to, when you first speak, name it precinct.
Thank you. I believe I did both in the video and in person, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to add just one personal bit with the time that I have left. Which is that I'm supporting this because this is a very personal matter to me. I have lived for years with my two other life partners. I believe that we're a family, but we're not seen as a family in the eyes of the town. And so don't count as a family for things like. Hospital visitation, even though I'm their only family member in the living in the area. And we don't, you know, count as a family in terms of getting benefits, which we recently encountered. When I tried to get dental insurance through one of my partners workplaces and they require proof of a domestic partnership in order to provide that. So I hope that people will support this for me and many others I know in Arlington and other cities in town. Across the state in similar situations. I really just want sort of my family to be recognized as such by Arlington and and have this for others so that we can care for each other in times of need. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Adam McNeil.
Hello, Adam McNeil, precinct six. I'm just to speak quickly to the amendment because I think probably everyone or most people are in favor of the main motion. Fundamentally, I think this is a civil rights issue, even if it might be affecting, say, a large, much smaller percent of people than other recent civil rights issues that we've had. And not that one should need personal experience to. Side on a level of civil rights issue, but I can tell I have multiple friends and long time people that I've known. That have been in long term, polyamorous or otherwise multiple person relationships. And they really are, it is incredibly difficult legally, and this obviously doesn't fix all those issues, but is a step in the right direction for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gail Mo Hamlin.
Hello, Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Moderator. Giermo Hamlin, precinct fourteen. I'd like to start out by thanking you, Town Council, especially Michael Cunningham for his patience with my silly questions. I like to thank Mr. Meeks very quickly, but what began as an exploration in empowering. Cohabitating unmarried couples, given recent state legislature measures during COVID nineteen. It seemed like a very good petition to start off as a town meeting member. Prior to my petition, Cambridge and Somerville with their separately constituted authority enacted provisions allowing for plural partnerships. Throughout my petitioning process, it was unavoidable. I sought the help of Town Council, Rainbow Arlington, and most recently the Select Board. And I do want to say that I appreciate this like or the work I please refer to their report. But in short, they feel certain about two adults that will be adopted without issue. And I do ask that you vote for the main motion without issue and without delay. We had the opportunity during the Select Board to confront the second line of the article, which is to define the parameters of domestic partnerships in Arlington. So please allow myself and Mr. Meeks and these others to really explain our rationale as to why we like to adopt this provision for allowing for plural partnerships. We are not asking the town manager or the Select Board to begin buying group health insurance for employees. Such as we would be afraid of, such as under Connors versus the city of Boston, where former Mayor Menino with an executive order. Try to square that away. We are not looking to do that. We are duly within our scope to consider this amendment. That is approved, that is looking to be approved with a main motion that was approved by the Select Board. Let me end, let me close this with an italicized bulk concession that this amendment is not a hundred percent guaranteed. But this I've known has not mattered in countless other home rule efforts brought before this body. We have worked really hard to narrow this amendment, meaning that should it be severed? Again, meaning that should it fail to meet the AG's standard, the main motion will endure. And then we can return to Rainbow Arlington for next steps. We ask you to vote in favor of Mr. Meeks amendment as a start to recognizing plural domestic partnerships as they have most recently and abundantly been recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamblin. William Brooks Harrelson.
Brooks Harrelson, precinct sixteen. I just have a question for the framers of this article. Clause seven seems of the definitions in. Section two seems to me to be overly restrictive and I'm wondering why it is there.
I believe you have Assistant Town Council. Michael Cunningham, who is. Heading up this, Mr. Cunningham, can you answer that question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. And thank you for the question. I think that was in the main motion was intended to make sure that the. Proposed bylaw amendment did not run afoul of state law regarding marriage. Or civil unions.
So if I'm living with my uncle and I take a trip. We can't form a domestic partnership where my uncle would be able to work with the school system for my child.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Next up, we have Betty Stone.
Betty Stone, precinct seven. I am in favor of passing this article. And I have two questions about the termination language in the amendment. The first is just a point of clarification. Maybe Mr. Meeks can help me with this. The way I understand it, if any member of a. What was the language that you were using? Multi partnership? If any member. And or what it says is any member may terminate the domestic partnership. Does that mean that if? If there are three people in a partnership and one of them decides to terminate their. Membership in the partnership, does that mean that the domestic partnership does not exist for the remaining two people? That's my first question.
Mr. Cunningham, can you give us an opinion on that? Or is this a? Issue that hasn't been resolved yet?
That's how I read this. Section C, number one in the amendment that was just filed today.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, and it's a good question. This is Michael Cunningham, Deputy Town Council. The way that is written, it would be an issue of first impression, but it's my belief that it is likely that it would terminate the entire domestic partnership.
Because I'm just questioning that because I. I'm questioning it simply because it. I'm not sure that that's what the. Folks who created this amendment intended, and I wanted just to be clear. The second is kind of a related. Question that comes down to the very end where it says. Any person filing a termination statement, this is the very last sentence. Must declare under the pains and penalties of perjury that the domestic partnership is thereby terminated. And that all domestic partners have been notified of such termination either. Personally or by mailing a copy of the termination statement to the domestic. Partners and that single partner apostrophe S last email unusual address by certified mail. So. Again, this is a little grammar nerdy, but that seems to me to be saying that. If partner, I'm just going to name them one, two and three. If partner one wants to terminate this partnership. They need to do it. By sending. Or personally or mailing a copy of the termination statement to the domestic. Partners, it seems to me, I it's a question, is that supposed to be a single partner's last unusual address? And who, which partner is that? Is that number two or number three? Or should it be partners S apostrophe, which is the other two people in this. Partnership, the language is the the section is unclear in terms of what its actual intent is to me. And what this language says, and you know, I preface this all by saying I am in favor of the. Motion in general and the amendment in general. But I have these questions about the termination. Section. So if anybody can help me with understanding that, that. What the intent is there, that would be helpful. And I just want to make sure that this amendment says what it's intended and what the. Writers of the. Article and the amendment wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we bring Mr. Meeks back for a second? I have one specific question to ask him.
Hello, Amos Meeks, precinct three.
Mr. Meeks, did you mean that S in the word partners, partner apostrophe S, the apostrophe to follow the S as to as opposed to preceding it?
Yes, I think I think that was missed. Thank you very much. Follow the S.
So with your, with your permission, Mr. Meeks, I'm going to make an administrative change of that apostrophe from before the S in that last line partner. Apostrophe S to partners. S then apostrophe.
Please do.
Thank you. And thank you. Ms. Stone for bringing that to our attention. Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Our next speaker is Dan Dunn.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Daniel Dunn. Former select board member.
So, Mr. Moderator, can you hear me? I apologize.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Daniel Dunn for precinct twenty one. I had an audio issue. I apologize.
No problem.
I support the amendment and I support the main motion. If the amendment fails, I still strongly support the main motion. I remember when my rights as a gay man were not protected. I read a right to a job, a right to care for others, a right to be joined by my loved one from another country. I don't have to worry about that anymore and I can't tell you how much that matters. I have the deepest empathy for Amos Meeks and his family and I want him to enjoy the revolution that I have seen in my lifetime. Are we breaking new ground? Maybe we are, but maybe we aren't. Love is love is love is love. This bylaw may lose on the state level, but the power of town meeting comes from when we say what we think and it is time to lead. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Yontar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Teamwork high on to our precinct seven pass.
Thank you. Ian Goodsell.
Mr. Moderator, it's Ian Goodsell from precinct eleven. I was just wondering, I am very much for the article as as written in the. Select Board and for the amendment as as written by Mr. Meeks. Is there a chance that if the amendment is passed, that the original article could get struck down?
I'm just. What would, what will happen is if we vote on the amendment first. If that would change the original article to read what the amendment says. And that would be the final vote that we will have, and the article as amended would be our final bylaw.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I know. I understood, I understood that, sir. Um, I was just wondering from a, at, at a state level, seeing as we are, would be. Uh, what um, trailblazing a little bit from what I understand. What do you think about that? Do, is there an opinion on anyone that?
Let's ask, let's, let's ask Mr. Cunningham. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Michael Cunningham, Deputy Town Council. Yes, if it's, if, if this were sent to the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit. It would be a novel issue and the outcome is unclear. There are other towns in Massachusetts that have. Passed domestic partnership bylaw amendments, but they've always been two-person. Uh, to do, to do a bylaw amendment for more than two persons would be uh, an issue of first impression before the AG's unit. And we just have to wait and see how they make a determination on that. Um, just, I note that there was one community that passed the domestic partnership bylaw post Goodridge. And that was true in two thousand four. So it's unclear at this time how the AG's municipal law unit would rule on this issue.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cunningham. And just, just, uh, just to be clear, I'm very much for both of these. I think, uh, what Mr. Dunn said was, uh, very moving. And, uh, and very true. And I encourage you both, I encourage all of you to vote for this. Thank you.
Uh, Gordon Jamison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Davis in precinct twelve. Um, I just have one quick question. Um. If I heard correctly, I believe Mr. Meek said that two at Cambridge and Somerville. Had passed uh, more than two member um, domestic partnerships. Is that, did I hear correctly? And have those been reviewed by the Attorney General?
Mr. Cunningham, can you enlighten us?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, thank you. Uh, Michael Cunningham, Deputy Town Council. Uh, it's my understanding, I may just have to disagree with Mr. Meeks. I don't think Cambridge's. Domestic partnership bylaw permits more than two persons. I know Somerville's does. That was passed by city ordinance last summer. Um, but because the city ordinance is not subject to review by the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit. This would be the first time that that unit faces this question.
Ah, so.
The point of, point of order, Mr. Moderator.
Uh, can I have my question first?
Oh, I'm, I, I, well, this is of course, I, I, I just wanna clarify.
Wait, Steve, you can't just break in.
Point of order.
I'm trying to ask a question.
Point, point of information.
All right, sorry, but you still have to use the buttons, Steve. But go ahead. What's your point of information and stop the clock on Gordon?
No, a, a, a week after we had our hearing in March, Cambridge City Council amended their bylaw. That, so it includes more than two people.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. But, but in the future, you gotta use the buttons.
Okay, my back?
Yep, Mr. Gordon Jamison's back. So continue your clock, Gordon.
For the, for the, for the Deputy Town Council, my question would be, I believe would be for him. Um. Does do it, does the AG office in Massachusetts have the ability to um, question city ordinances like these two? So would they have reviewed those? Or is that, how would, if that had were to happen, how would that happen in Massachusetts?
Mr. Moderator.
Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, thank you for the question, Mr. Jameson. No, it does not review the city ordinances. And if the challenge to those ordinances would come from private citizen, private group via legal challenge and not, not subject to review by the Attorney General's Municipal Law Unit.
Okay, and um, in, in, when, when the AG looks at this, um. Our bylaw with amend S as amended as suggested by Mr. Meeks. Uh, would the uh, existence of sea ordinances in Cambridge and Somerville um, work in our favor?
I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Jameson. I just know that they would have ninety days to provide us with their written opinion. What they would consider is up to them.
Okay, so I'm, I'm very comfortable. I was worried about the amendment, um, sort of, uh. Screwing up the works here, but it seems like, uh, that we have precedents in other cities to refer to, and. If the state wants to take them all down, they can, but that's, that's the AG's purview. Um, we should vote this through. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Jamison. Mr. Peter Gast.
Peter Gast precinct two. I move to terminate debate on the article and all matters related.
Thank you very much. Can we get a second on Mr. Gast's motion to terminate debate? It's been seconded. And we'll now bring up the motion to terminate debate. So town meeting members. Scroll back to the portal. And get ready to vote. Adam is gonna confirm voting. If you cannot use the portals to vote, then you will use the chat. This is a motion to terminate debate on article fifteen. A bit. Soon as we get by that, debate is now open. So you may have to refresh. If you want to terminate debate, please press one and hit cast your vote. If you do not want to terminate debate, hit two, no, and cast your vote. If you cannot use the voting buttons in the portal, please chat them in. And if you can't do either one, please contact Miss Brazil, seven eight one, three one six, three zero seven one. And we have about six seconds left. So town meeting members, if you haven't voted to terminate debate yet, please do so right now. And as soon as we get the thumbs up. We are gonna close the voting. So go ahead and close voting. Thank you. And a motion to terminate debate is successful eighty-seven percent. It's a two-thirds vote and it passes two hundred and two with the affirmative, twenty-nine of the negative. So most debate is terminated as soon as we cycle through the seven screens. We'll go to a vote on the. First, the amendment and then the main motion. So what we're gonna do. Is first, we will vote on Mr. Meeks amendment. If you want to amend the main motion. As Mr. Meeks is advocating, as printed in his amendment, which was circulated. You'll vote one, yes, on the amendment. If you don't want amended as he's advocating, you'll vote two for no. But we have to finish cycling through the screens and we'll bring up the vote for the amendment first. Fifteen. So what he's doing is entering Mr. Meeks amendment into the database. And same drill, town meeting members, uh, navigate back to the portal. Use the portal to vote. If you cannot use the portal, then you'll chat in your vote. In worst case scenario, you'll call Miss Brazil, seven eight one, three one six, three zero seven one. And go back to your portal page. If you need to, go ahead and refresh. And voting is now open, so go ahead and do what necessary. If you want Mr. Meeks amendment, you'll vote one for yes. If you do not want to amend it as he is suggesting, you'll vote two for no. If you can't do either, you'll. Use the chat feature or call Miss Brazil. So this is on the vote on the amendment. One to amend, two not to amend. If you haven't voted yet, please do so while we wait to get the thumbs up on the chatted votes. I think we only have one more that's being entered at this point. Okay, we have all the votes in, so let's close voting. Amendment passes eighty-three percent, so the vote is amended. Hundred ninety-two votes in the affirmative for the amendments, thirty-seven against. We'll cycle through the screens and we'll go back to the main motion as amended. Okay, now we're gonna take a vote on the main motion as amended. So town meeting members, get ready to vote. Go to your participate page while Adam does his job. Again, one to vote yes for the main motion as amended. If you can't use the voting portal, use the chat feature. Or call Miss Brazil if necessary. You're all gonna have her phone number memorized, seven eight one, three one six, three zero seven one. Okay, vote one, yes, for the main motion as amended, two, no. To vote against the motion. So we have twenty-seven, twenty-six seconds left to go ahead and vote. Cast your votes or use the chat feature. The clerk's number is seven eight one, three one six, three zero seven one. Okay, we're all set. Close voting. The main motion as amended vote passes by ninety-five percent, two hundred twenty-one in the affirmative. Two twenty-one in the affirmative, eleven in the negative. It's a vote and I so declare it. That ends article fifteen. As soon as we cycle through the votes. Okay, we're gonna close the open, close the article. We're gonna open article, the next one that we have that is open, we have not voted on yet, is article twenty. Article twenty, the recommended vote of the board of selection. Oh, Mr. Warden has a point of order. Mr. Warden, what's your point of order?
Yeah, uh, Mr., Mr. Moderator, John Word precinct eight. It's nine thirty. Shouldn't we be having our recess at this point?
Yes, we should, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much. I've been losing track of time. Last week, last year, Monday, I went through past eleven o'clock and today I passed nine thirty by a minute. Thank you, Mr. Warden. When we come back, we'll. When we come back after our ten-minute break, we'll do um. Article twenty. The vote for public remote participation, and there were two articles, two. Free amendments under that. Very much, okay. So did we get any new videos of uh, the high schoolers playing music or anything? I don't think so. So maybe we'll just show the same jazz band we did last time.
Sure.
And this clip is a perfect length, ten minutes and thirty-two seconds, which is the length of our break. Okay, town meeting members. Okay, we're back. We first will bring up the proponents of the articles. First, we'll bring up the article, which is a recommended vote. Of the board, the select board. That's printed in their report. That's Mr. Oster's amendment and Mr. Ray. So first we'll bring up the select board if they wish to address the article.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve De Corsi, Chair of the Select Board. Before I begin, I want to apologize to you, Mr. Jameson, in the meeting for my improper use of the unmute button. It won't happen again.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. De Corsi.
Sure. Yeah, so Article twenty, the board is recommending the creation of a study committee to look into remote participation for meetings as we come back from the pandemic and going forward. And we had a really good hearing on this back in March, on March twenty-second. And the proposal that came out of that hearing was initially recommended by Mr. Dunn. And what we tried to do as a board on the vote was to to model this type of committee after the Election Modernization Committee or a committee like that, where it's a special purpose committee with a specific timeframe and a specific issue to look at. So you see some tight timeframes here in terms of the period of study. When the committee will come back or when we're hoping they come back with some initial recommendations in October, which is designed to capture the capital planning cycle, the beginning of that cycle, and also to address the urgency that we heard from the proponents on the article. And then there's a two-year window for the for the duration of the committee. And I do want to add that as part of these discussions, and we've all recognized as a town that the, during the pandemic, public participation has unquestionably increased. It's through the Zoom meetings and we are told, we are going to be talking very soon at the select board of coming back into the chamber, but certainly when we do come back, it will be with remote public participation to start, no question about it. And we're going to look into a number of things as we come back and implement that process. So it was a five to zero vote and we look forward to hearing from the committee as they do their work, if this is successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De Corsi. First, I'm going to bring up Adam Oster to introduce his motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Adam Oster, Precinct Three, and I'm want to just add to the charge for this committee by including this kind of a review and examination of the ways that public bodies make their information available to the public. When I go online to try to find out what's going on, some committees are very good. The main ones use Novus Agenda. The information is there. But many committees are spottier or they're idiosyncratic about where you go to find the information. It makes it harder. Also, Mr. Moderator, it's the normal practice and for good reason not to post minutes of committee meetings until they have been approved and accepted by the following meeting. But what that often means is, for example, if a committee meets once a month, the public doesn't get to find out what happened at that meeting for two, for two months in advance, or a month or a month and a half, unless they happen to be there. And since the purpose of this committee includes addressing gaps between being present and being remote, it seems to me to be an appropriate addition to the charge and possibly even a place where there's sort of some easy low-hanging fruit. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
So, Mr. Oster, are you offering a motion for, to amend?
Yes, I move to amend. Would you like me to read the motion?
If you want, I think I'm trying to find out if Mr. Karowski has it to display. So just so we can get it in front of the meeting, we can you can introduce it and then somebody can, there we go. There's your motion.
Right.
And now if we just get someone to second that, then we're all set. So it has been seconded by Mr. Peter Fuller and Mr. Moore, so that, Mr. Oster, your motion is now before the board, for the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Ms. Elizabeth Dre, who has two separate motions. Hope we can bring Ms. Dre up.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Elizabeth Dre, Precinct Eight. I'd like to offer Town Meeting an option, or two options, I'm sorry, to amend Article twenty. As the original proponent of this article, excuse me, Mr. Moderator, would you like me to speak to both at the same time or separately?
Well, we'll speak to one first. We'll speak to the this one that we have now in front of us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That's committee reports, correct?
That's number three A committee reports.
Thank you. So as the original proponent of this article, I'd like to thank the Select Board and Mr. Dunn specifically for seeing the value and the need for this idea and for understanding that hybrid meetings are here to stay beyond the pandemic and finding a way to support the spirit and intent of the original article with what is before us tonight from the Select Board. The amendment before you is an option to amend the committee report. Interestingly, this year's Envision Arlington survey that went out asked a question of whether residents would prefer to attend meetings that were remote, remote only, hybrid, in person, or NA. And of the three thousand three hundred and thirty-six respondents, two thousand two hundred and forty-six of them wanted an option to participate and engage in town meetings without actually being in the room of those meetings. This is the future. Only a hundred and thirty people wanted to only participate in person. So the intent of the second amendment is to ask the study committee to be responsive to the expressed wishes of town residents and to consider, including in their report, recommendations that can be immediately implemented by the Select Board without waiting for Town Meeting two thousand twenty-two to vote or another budget cycle. Through the extensive research that I did in preparation of the original article, I believe that the study committee will find several actions that the Select Board, under their own authority, will be able to implement immediately without waiting for a year from now at the next ten, a town meeting. And similar to what Chairman Select Chair, Mr. De Corsi, said, they themselves are going to be implementing it for themselves immediately without waiting. So there, it can be done, and I would love for it to be done before, you know, before twelve months go by. Arlington residents want it to happen now, so let's not let, make them wait any longer than needed. So I encourage you to vote yes on this amendment to deliver to residents what they're asking for and to take advantage of this incredible momentum of resident engagement that's been created this last year and not wait a full year. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, hold on. So I think we have you've offered this amendment, and I believe it looks like Peter Fuller has seconded it. If we can put Peter's hand down, so when we get to the second amendment, we know that someone was seconding her second amendment. Okay, so go ahead, Ms. Dre.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Elizabeth Dre, Precinct Eight. The second amendment I'm proposing as an option for Article, to amend Article twenty is to amend the committee membership. What I'm, this amendment does is reduces from four to one the number of town meeting members on the committee and instead distributes those three remaining members in the following manner. Adding one member of the Council of Aging or their designee and adding two members of the public appointed by the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Director. This proposed language reflects input from the DEI Director, that's the Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Director, the Town Moderator and the Chair of the Council on Aging. And my rationale for these changes is as follows. At a precinct meeting where this article was discussed, the Chair of the Council of Aging spoke to the need to include the input of seniors as they are a unique demographic and may have a unique needs when it comes to being able to participate remotely in a meeting. So for this reason, this amendment adds one member of the Council of Aging or their designee. The inclusion of two Arlington residents versus the requirement that they be town meeting members allows input from allows input from a wider group of individuals who may have more varied experiences and needs interacting with public bodies. Naming the DEI Director as the appointing authority of those residents reflects the need for all study groups to be intentionally formed with a DEI lens. I spoke to Director Ms. Harvey and she's happy to be the appointing authority for these two community members. And I'd like to take a minute to talk about the importance for Arlington to intentionally form study groups with a DEI or Diversity Equity and Inclusion lens. Currently nationwide, business, government, and nonprofits are recognizing the need to approach hiring, decision making, and policy development with the explicit intent to build a diverse team and include diverse voices. They're deliberately looking at how they are identifying, approaching, and encouraging diversity, equity, and inclusion in their companies and committees and realizing the importance of asking themselves, how are we attracting, sourcing, and selecting who we hire and who we are asking to join our boards and committees?
Straight.
Yes.
You're kind of off scope.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm trying to explain the reason for including the DEI.
Yeah, yeah, well, just reel it in. Plus, you get near the end of your time.
Okay. So I guess for these reasons, I believe that all study groups in Arlington, especially one that is focused on engaging community residence, residents needs to be intentionally formed with that perspective and specifically include members who are focused with on that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Town Meeting.
Thank you. Okay, now we have the main motion in front of us and two. And the second one has been seconded. So we have the main motion and the two amendments before us. So first come up with Bill Berkowitz, William Berkowitz. Mr. Berkowitz. You're live, Bill. Go ahead.
I'd like to speak briefly in support of the amendment, in support of the article as amendment is amended both by Elizabeth Dre and Adam Oster.
Name and precinct.
Bill Berkowitz, Precinct Eight. And maybe to speak more briefly, more briefly than I had intended because Mr. De Corsi said basically outlined the key arguments in themselves. But I support the article largely for the reason stated in the article itself, most of the time participation is a good thing in general and in government life in particular for two basic reasons, both morally and practically. Morally, because participation is, of course, a key element of our democratic system of government. Leads to more voices being heard and more greater variety of voices. But practically, because it also leads to better decisions with more community buy in for those decisions. When you have better decisions, you have better community outcomes. Our own recent experience in town shows that remote opportunities increase overall participation when it's available. Closer to home, you can see that in the attendance figures for our own virtual town meeting where more people come to this remote town meeting than than due to Town Auditorium. Wonderful little town hall auditorium is. So why not make this a regular feature of Arlington Town Government where somebody can either participate either remotely or in person? And so the study committee, as proposed in the article, makes sense to me to work out the details of allowing of remote participation in our public life. Thanks for mentioning it, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Berkowitz. Mustafa Veraglu.
Hello, I think I'm off mute now.
Yep, we can hear you.
Yep, this is Mustafa Veraglu, Precinct Ten. And I I think I won't reiterate all the reasons why this is good. On the main, in the in the general idea of having the remote participation. So I I support the main article. You know, any way we can get there. I would, just one practical aspect, we will be going to ask the town for an override in the next few years. And I think anything that engages the town with the boards, the governance, the any, you know, access to see how things are run is going to be a good thing. And I think it'll also give, I think it'll help support that going into the future. I would like to say I support all three amendments. And in particular, one of the the remits of the study group is to rank the rank, the 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 ways, the committees and the implementation of remote participation. And I think one of the rankings should be to identify those meetings or committees that can be implemented ahead of a year from now with a report in October. And if something can be done with, let's say, nominal money or money available in the IT budget that would be used in that period anyway, bring that forward and bring this on so that we don't lose this lovely momentum we've had of participation. And then I support the other article where I think a wide view of voices and then really proactively asking for that wide view will be valuable to the town and make it a much more inclusive place. So I just support both articles. Thank you.
Stacy Smith.
Hi there, Stacy Smith, Precinct Three. I strongly support this article and I support Amendment One and Adam Oster's amendment. I am the Director of a nonprofit that is focused on stakeholder engagement in public issues. And I have seen firsthand the dramatic increase in public participation that has occurred with the shift to virtual meetings in my processes all over the country. I did want to speak about the second, some concerns about that Second Amendment. Speaking from that same experience, while I strongly support the importance of a DEI lens. And I think this group should certainly reflect and draw on diverse participants and diverse perspectives. I do think there are other areas of expertise that could really be helpful to this committee. And I just, there there is professional expertise in running these kinds of meetings and working on hybrid processes and things like that, that I just wouldn't want to see lost if there's only one sort of at large town meeting representative. So I just wanted to support the article overall, support the 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 other two amendments and just to caution against too narrowly prescribing to 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 just DEI participants. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Sophie Magliazzo.
Mr. Moderator, Sophie Magliazzo, Precinct Eight. I rise in support of all the amendments and the recommended vote. In particular, I do believe that where there is a will, there is a way, and there is the momentum that I hope we won't lose. I do want to raise my particular concern and support for the members, the disabled members of our community who I heard at precinct meetings had extremely difficult times, sometimes especially in wheelchairs, accessing in person these meetings, even the Select Board meetings. So as a way to also save the town, I don't know, to to allow more access to all members of our community, I think this is very important. And hopefully, to address the concern that was raised by the previous speaker, maybe members of the DEI community might also have the expertise that she mentioned would be a benefit. So maybe we can kill two birds with one stone there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roger Holland.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Roger Holland, Precinct Seven. I am speaking in support of the amendments and in in support, of course, of of the basic article. I bring to these comments a kind of odd background. I ran a fair bit of research on collaborative environments for government operations at the Mitre Corporation over a period of 20 years. So things, things that we're doing today in this meeting, once upon a time, were research topics. And in the course of all that, we picked up some bits of wisdom, you know, really kind of more, more in the area of social science than than bits and bytes. One piece of that wisdom is that these environments, these technologies are successfully adopted if they allow each role in a community, each, you know, person in in some specific role to do the things that they feel they need to do. And if, you know, if that's done, then you know, the system succeeds. If if it isn't, then it doesn't. I look at the amendment to, you know, modify the list of participants in the study committee through that lens. Getting people, you know, with some distinction as as to their life experiences, the roles that they're trying to play in in our processes here that that we're trying to augment with these technologies. That that actually matters. The other Dre amendment that that urged sort of early action where early action could be taken also speaks to to things that I've seen work in that that these technologies tend to to lend themselves to rapid prototyping to limited experiments from which things are learned. And and then one can move on and do more of what works and stay away from what didn't. So that's, that's really what I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Mr. Jameson, Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gordon Jameson, Precinct Twelve. I'd like to thank Ms. Dre for offering this article and to thank Ms. Dre and Mr. Oster for their amendments. Looking at this article, the dash, especially with the addition of Mr. Oster's Section G. As I read the article, they have, by the time town meeting closes, adjourns, hopefully sooner rather than later, they have about four months to complete this work. I would, I would ask the, I would suggest that we change the October 1st, 2021 deadline to January 15th, 2022, which gives them two weeks about to submit articles. And of course, those are, those are just the general articles, so they could be done, I think, quickly. And it gives them, since the wording is on or before, they can submit multiple iterations of their report along the way. But otherwise, they're basically silenced between October 1st and their report to town meeting. Mr. Heim, could I ask Mr. Heim a question?
You can ask a question and I'll decide who gets to answer it.
I I would, I would like some input from perhaps the Town Council about my proposal of moving it to January 15th, 2022 as the as the termination of their ability to report before town meeting. Does that give them enough time to do whatever he needs to do to get it in the warrant?
Doug Heim, Town Council. Thank you, Mr. Jameson. Appreciate the question. I think if they're keeping me posted on what they're contemplating, yes. Sometimes that time of year, there's a lot of questions and I would want to make sure that I'm adequately vetting any articles that they want to submit for feasibility and helping as.
Would you prefer January 1st, Mr. Heim?
I I think, I did, again, as long as I know what's coming, I think that 15, the 15th is a better date than January 1st.
Okay, Mr. Moderator, then I move that the October 1st, 2022 be replaced with January 15th of 2022 to provide the committee with additional time to report. And I want to accentuate for people considering my modification that the wording says on or before. So if they come up with something in August, they can submit it. They can submit something else in November. And then finally, by the 15th of January of next year, this doesn't, this means that they won't be silenced from October 1st to town meeting convenes next year. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Hold on. So, Mr. Jameson, you're 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 proposing a motion to amend.
Section three.
Section, section three. You're going to change the word October 1, 2021 to January 15th, 2022.
Yes, Mr. Mitre, to give the committee more flexibility in their submissions. Obviously, they can still do it by October 1st if they want, but they can then do additional work.
Hold on one second. Don't go away. Ms. Brazil, do you have the ability to type that up for us?
Um, I mean, probably it'll take longer. I mean, it'll take a few minutes. You know, are we amending the main motion or everything?
Yes, just the main motion.
Okay.
Men, section three A, delete October 1, 2021, and substitute January 15th, 2022.
All right, let me see what I can do.
Okay, so, Mr. Jameson, you're going to have to write that down and give me three copies. Your your motion has been seconded, Mr. Jameson.
Thank you.
We're going to see if we can write that out on the fly. Thank you. Ms. Dre, what's your point of order?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, Elizabeth Dre, Precinct Eight. I was not aware, I thought that there would be no motions on the floor that people had to put in an amendment 48 hours before.
So you didn't, you didn't carefully read my letter. Small emotion meant small amendments that you're easily understandable. In other words, something that I can understand, such as what Mr. Jameson just did, changing a simple date and nothing more, or changing a an apostrophe S to an S apostrophe. It's up to the moderator's discretion to allow those kind of motions. What you did and what Adam has done is a little more than a simple amendment. That's why I wanted them in a, in a, ahead of time. So I am going to allow Mr. Jameson's at my discretion.
May I, may I ask a question, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
So I I guess I'm confused because I have, I therefore wasn't able to speak to his amend, to his.
Then get then.
Amendment.
You you get to, Ms. Ms. Dre? You can get back on the speaking list.
Right. It it seems like that is a big motion to be making on the fly.
It's easily understandable.
It has big.
Ms. Dre. You're arguing with me.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Gruber.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Ms. Gruber.
Rebecca Gruber, Precinct Eight, Town Meeting Member. Can I first ask a question? Which is, I know that there was great effort in the writing of this warrant article and in consideration of the two amendments that Ms. Dre proposed. So the date of October 1st, 2021, I'm sure had a specific intent behind it. May I ask Ms. Dre what her thinking was behind choosing the date of October 1st, 2021 for the final report?
Yeah, Ms. Gruber. You can speak against the amendment. But but to call Ms. Dre up and give. But to call Ms. Dre up and give her, Ms. Gruber, may I finish? To call Ms. Dre up and ask her to further enunciate and speak upon the article, "out of order is not fair to the other town meeting members on the list." If she wants, she can raise her hand again. You can ask questions and I get to decide who gets to answer them. That's how it works in town meeting. You ask a question, I decide who gets to answer it, as my prerogative is the moderator.
Well, so my original intent to speak was to urge that we implement whatever recommendations are made as quickly as possible so that the people in our community who will not be able to attend meetings in person, which we hopefully will all be able to do soon, but some of the members of our community, even when we are able to meet in person, probably will not be able to participate. And until we have remote participation available to them, they will be silenced. And so my original point was to be in support of urging the committee to consider any recommendations that can be immediately implemented before waiting for town meeting in 2022 or for the next budget cycle. Now I'm faced with wanting to address the issue of having recommendations to implement by October 1st, 2021 versus the amendment that's just been proposed, which is in January of 2022. So I'm anxious that we move as quickly as we possibly can to start making it possible for people to participate in a remote manner so they're not excluded when public meetings are allowed. So I'm anxious to know what the implications are between October 1st, has the original proposed date, and January has the amended date.
The implications are if the committee is not ready to report on October 1, they can report as late as January 15th. If they are ready to report on October 1st, they can do so. It says "on or before." So as soon as the committee is ready to report, they can report to the Select Board so they can make many decisions and implementations of actions that they can do. That's why I suggested to Ms. Dre to put how to word her Second Amendment to include that portion. Mr. Chapdeline does wish to address your point of anxiousness. Mr. Chapdeline?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. I just, I thought I could be helpful in sharing, and I think Mr. DeCoursey touched on this in his opening remarks on this article, that we will be beginning this work, frankly, probably even before this committee would be formed, given that it is likely in the upcoming months that the Select Board and staff will be coming back to the chambers. And I know Mr. DeCoursey is Chair, and I can't speak for the entire board, but my understanding is the board is committed to beginning this work. So I can't tonight guarantee that every board, committee, or commission will be fully established to run hybrid meetings, you know, immediately. But I'm quite confident that we will be trying and practicing hybrid meetings, likely parallel and in partnership with the work of this group. So I hope that can allay the concerns that there won't be a flick of a switch off, rather in attempt to do this work while it's being studied.
Thank you, Mr. Chapdeline, for that answer. And I encourage us to vote in such a way that we allow for remote participation as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Again, all we're doing right now is forming the committee to study this. So if anyone else wishes to speak about forming the committee, our next speaker is Mr. Paul Schlickman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Schlickman, Precinct 9. I have a question about the first Dray amendment and comments on the second. On the First Amendment, were offering any recommended actions that the Select Board can immediately take under its own authority that do not require the necessity of a bylaw or additional appropriation of funds? What authority does the Select Board, under our present form of government, have over requiring other boards and commissions to do things?
Mr. Chapdeline or Mr. Heim? Mr. Heim?
Doug Heim, Town Council. The Select Board is a policymaking entity with respect to its own meetings and in its dialogues with the Town Manager about, you know, prioritization of resources and things of that nature. It can certainly be a forum for discussing and trying to set goals for not just itself, but other bodies. The open meeting law doesn't really establish any requirements beyond those that are already in existence. Just so folks get a refresher on this, the reason that we're allowed to conduct meetings the way we are right now is because of the executive order relative to the COVID pandemic. So there's a lot of things that can be done as options. Whether or not each committee and commission chair chooses to take them is a little bit of a different matter, but it's primarily oriented towards what are our goals? How do we want to prioritize the resources we have available in advance of any future appropriation, things of that nature?
Thank you very much. Secondly, I'd like to speak in opposition to the Second Dray amendment. And my rationale is this. I think that it's a good thing to have a diverse group of people appointed to any board or commission that we're doing. However, the form of this particular amendment removes the appointing authority of three seats from an elected official of the town to employees of the town who report either to or through the Town Manager. And I don't think that that is an appropriate way to make appointments to boards and commissions in the town. So I would urge people to vote their conscience on the first two amendments, but to vote no on the Second Dray amendment, changing the appointing authority, because I think it sets a terrible precedent for the town and that appointing to these kinds of committees should be left to the top line person, be it the Town Manager or the Board of Select, the Select Board, or to other authorities that are accountable to the people, not directly to the Town Manager. So please vote no on the Second Dray amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schlickman. Anna Hinkin?
Anna Hinkin, Precinct 6. I want to speak in support of this article generally and then the amendments as well. I'm both disabled and a graduate student. Being able to attend remotely to a lot of meetings, especially committee meetings, which are much more often than town meeting, would be extremely important for me. I wouldn't be able to physically comfortably sit in chairs in these rooms for many, many hours. I need to have a modified chair to sit in. And I'm often stuck in the lab until quite late as a graduate student. And I think in terms of the amendments, it's really important that we provide a near due date for this. I'm in school, I teach undergraduates, and if you give someone a much longer due date for something, they will not get started on it with any urgency. I think it's important to stick to the original October 1st date. So thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Hinkin. Lea Hyam? Lea, I'm sorry, Lea Bahian.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for getting the pronunciation correct. Lea Bahian, Precinct 11. And I am going to echo a bit of what Mr. Schlickman has said and also Ms. Smith. I rise in favor of the main motion. We do need to recognize that this is a very effective means for people to be able to access meetings. But I do speak against the Second Dray amendment, which reduces the number of appointed members from town meeting in favor of a town employee appointing some. And the reason I'm opposed to this is because, as town meeting members, we are expected to be public participants at a lot of meetings to educate ourselves on the various issues prior to town meeting. As everybody knows, it's not enough to just read the reports that we receive. We do have to also talk with others. We do have to make ourselves aware of the nuances. And the ability to do so remotely greatly impacts our ability to do that job well. In reducing our representation on the committee, it really would hinder our ability to do our jobs appropriately as we are elected by our town, as we are elected by the town to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hyam. Timor Yontar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Timor Kai Yontar, Precinct 7. A few things I want to say on this. First is that I support the original article very much. It's a study on whether we should have public remote participation. And I think that people need to remember that it's a study and I look forward to the results of that study. And we can have a long debate on that when those results come out. But I think that it's hardly so controversial or scary that we can't have a study. And we have a lot of amendments on this. I'm actually surprised by how many we've had. I would question whether, regardless of the merits of the idea behind it, whether Mr. Oster's amendment is in scope. I think that having committees be more transparent in how they post their minutes and their agendas and so forth is a great thing. Doesn't quite seem to be in the same realm as having people take part in those meetings. And then I'm fairly indifferent on the other three amendments. I would also just like to say that I've been doing this remotely as a committee chair for the last year. And I can't stand the online meetings, but I do definitely recommend that people interested should take part. We have agendas posted. It's not just my committee, it's many committees. And I look forward to having people take part, either virtually or in person or by some combination, if that's what we end up doing in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yontar. I find that Mr. Oster's motion is within the scope in that he just is asking that it also assess ways that public bodies provide information to public about their work. I find that's within the scope of the article. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alexander Franzosa?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Alexander Franzosa, Precinct 12. I move the previous question.
And all matters before it?
And all matters before it.
Very good. Thank you very much. You have a motion to terminate debate and it's been seconded. It's on the motion, it's on the main article and all the motions. It's been seconded, so now we're going to go to a motion to terminate debate. So town meeting members, if you'll navigate over to the portal, when Adam confirms the action and it opens the voting window, you use 1 for yes to go ahead to 1 for yes to terminate debate, 2 for no to continue debating whether we want to form a committee. If you can't use the portal, please use the chat feature on the Zoom window and just type in yes for termination or no to continue debating. So let's go over and vote 1 for yes or 2 for no. 1 to terminate, 2 for no. And if you can't do that at all, please contact Ms. Brazil by telephone, 781-316-3071. And town meeting members, if you haven't voted yet, please do so now. As soon as I get the thumbs up. So I got a few extra seconds to vote while we type in the few votes that were chatted to us. Okay, everybody's entered. Let's close the debate. Let's close voting. On the motion to terminate debate, passes by 80%.
Mr. Moderator, there is a point of order.
Okay, so hold on a sec. So that's a motion to terminate debate, passed by 80%, 186 in the affirmative and 46 in the negative. And thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Ms. Goodsell, what is your point of order?
Mr. Moderator, Ian Goodsell, Precinct 11. I would just ask that the, I would request that the text of the amendments be seen as we're voting on three different amendments now, if we could display four different amendments. If we could display the text of the amendments during the vote on each one of those, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, we'll actually be taking five separate votes under this article.
Right, right. So just wanted to make sure. I know, we all know what we're voting on, so I appreciate.
Yeah, yeah. We'll go through each one serially and have the amendment displayed when we vote, right before we vote on it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, first, we're going to vote on Mr. Oster's motion to amend. So if we can bring that up for one second, Adam. So Mr. Oster wants to amend the main motion by adding a Section G to Section 2, under the committee charge, adding the words "assessing ways that public bodies provide information to the public about their work." So we're going to take a vote on Mr. Oster's motion to amend, to add Section G. Go ahead, let's bring up his vote. Okay, so town meeting members, navigate to the portal. And when the voting screen is open, you'll be able to vote if you want to amend with Mr. Oster's amendment. when the voting screen is open, you'll be able to vote if you want to amend with Mr. Oster's amendment. If you want to add that section G, you will vote yes. If you do not want to add that section G to assess ways that public bodies provide information to the public about their work, you'll vote no. If you can't do either, go ahead and use the chat feature. So if you want Mr. Oster's amendment, vote yes. If you do not, vote no. Use chat if you cannot do either one. And if you can't do either of those two things, 781-316-3071. For town meeting members, we have twenty-six seconds left to vote.
John, it seems like quite a few people are having trouble voting.
Yeah, I see that. So let's hold the clock. Everyone, try and refresh your page and try to vote again. We got a bunch of people trying to vote. So just go back to the voting portal and hit refresh one more time. Refresh page, it's right up there next to raise point of order. And see if that refreshes the page and works for you.
Could people put it in again into the chat? It's gonna, it would take a long time to put in these fifteen people.
So if you are still unable to vote on the portal, chat it in one more time.
Thank you.
Anyone who chatted it before, we're not going to do it for you. You have to go ahead and chat it again now. Okay, it looks like we've had a lot of success then, huh? Yeah, everybody but one person, two people. Okay. As soon as we enter this last person, we'll close voting. Okay, we're all set. Let's close voting on Mr. Oster's amendment. Mr. Oster's amendment passes, two hundred and seven in the affirmative, nineteen in the negative. Mr. Oster's amended passes, so that amends the main motion by adding that in. Okay, we're going to run through the several screens. Then we'll get to Ms. Dre's first amendment. Okay. So now we're going to vote on Ms. Dre's first amendment, which is the one, section three A committees. Going to add that in. Let's go, let's go, because Elizabeth has two, Adam. Yeah, one, perfect. Can we bring her amendment up for us? I'll see. So Ms. Dre's first amendment, which we're going to vote on, wants to add the words, offer any recommended actions that the select board can immediately undertake under its own authority that do not require the necessity of a bylaw or the additional appropriation of funds not available in the current budget. So she wants to add those words in on her first amendment. So when we're going to vote, we're going to vote on this amendments and adding those in. So Mr. Warden, Patricia Warden and John Warden both have a point of order. So Patricia, what's your point of order?
Mr. Moderator, Patricia Warden, Precinct A. John has at least twenty times this evening lost the portal. And at this last time, he was not able to get back in, in time to vote. So he has not been able to vote. That's removing a right that he should have. And I had a great deal of trouble also keep losing the portal. I have to keep, you know, going back into, to bring up, which takes time. And I'm afraid I may not be able to vote the way that just happened to John on the previous vote. So I would like, please to have some technical help that's better than what we've been having. This is just very disappointing.
Yes, if you're unable to use the portal or the Zoom chat feature to vote, you do have the option to call Ms. Brazil.
Yes, John called and her line is busy. He missed the vote, in other words. And yes, Mr. High Chat also didn't work. So thank you.
Okay, well, would you like someone to call you?
Well, call my husband to get his vote on the previous, on Mr. Oster's amendment, please. Thank you. That would be very helpful.
Okay. We can't add it in because the voting's been closed. But we'll have somebody call you to see what your issue is. Can you give it? Dennis knows your phone number, I believe. Yes. Dennis or one of the guys is going to give you a call.
Mr. Moderator, if you could kindly wait for a vote the next time this happens. Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, let's go back to the vote on this one, Adam.
Are you ready to open voting, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir. Okay, town meeting members, we're going to go open voting on Ms. Dre's first amendment to add the ability for the committee to report to the select board. If you wish to vote for Ms. Dre's amendment number one to add the words the select board can, that they can offer any recommendations to the select board, go ahead and vote one for yes. Cast your vote or two for no, if you do not want to so amend it. And if that doesn't work, use the chat. And just type in yes or no. And if Patricia and John are having issues still, I attempt to call Ms. Brazil. And we'll give it a minute until we hear from them. I can see that Patricia has successfully voted. So we're asking if she wants to send John's vote through. Give it one second. The other town meeting members, go ahead and please vote. As soon as they get some sort of signal, we're good to go. We'll close voting. Okay, let's close voting. This is Ms. Dre's first amendment. It passes eighty-four percent. We have one hundred ninety-seven in the affirmative and thirty-seven in the negative. So it is so amended. Once we run through the screens, we're going to go Ms. Dre's second. Okay, let's bring up Ms. Dre's second amendment. And can we bring up the actual words itself? So Ms. Dre wants to change the composition of the committee, as you can see here. Wants to redistribute the appointing authorities around, as she has in front of you. So if you want to reconfigure the committee as Ms. Dre's advocating on her second amendment, you will vote one for yes. If you do not, you'll vote two for no. And we're going to ask you to go back to the portal, get ready to vote. While Adam brings the vote up. So if we all, wait a second before we refresh our page. One for yes to reconfigure the committee as Ms. Dre's proposing, vote two for no. If you can't do either, chat it in. Or call Ms. Brazil, 781-316-3071. Feel like one of those old timey commercials where they yell out the names of the phone number. Okay, we got about twelve seconds left. Can we see the voting screens, Mr. Kroski? Let's see how we're doing. Town meeting members, please either put your vote into the portal or into the chat. We have a lot of people who have chatted votes in. So we're going to have a few seconds to enter all of those. Okay, we have everybody entered. Let's close voting. Ms. Dre's second amendment fails by a vote of ninety-eight in the affirmative and one hundred thirty-one in the negative. So we are not rechanging the configuration of the committee. Fourth, once we go through the screens. We'll bring up Mr. Jamison's motion. And we have that typed out, so we'll be able to see that in front of us. There's a comment that someone's getting a database issue, database error issue every time. We are getting a lot of those tonight. We will speak to the the web host and find out what's going on with that. So we're going to bring up Mr. Jamison's typed met as soon as Adam enters it in. So Ms. Brazil has typed this up for us on the fly. So what Mr. Jamison is proposing doing is changing the report date on the committee from October 1, 2021 to January fifteenth, 2022. So if you're in favor of changing that report date from on or before October 1, 2021 to on or before January fifteenth, 2022, you'll vote yes for Mr. Jamison's emotion. If you're against that, you'll vote no. If we enable voting. And go ahead and use the portal, town meeting members, for one for yes to change the report date, vote two for no. If you're unable to do both, chat it in or call Ms. Brazil. So town meeting members, please take a moment and vote on the portal, one key has to change the report date, two for no. All else fails, chat it in or call Ms. Brazil. 781-316-3071. Okay. We have all our votes in. We can close voting. Mr. Jamison's motion passes, one hundred and eighteen in the affirmative and one hundred and six in the negative. So it's firm to vote. Now, we have before us, once we run through the screens, main motion of the select board has amended by Mr. Oster's first, Mr. Oster's amendment, Ms. Dre's first amendment, and Mr. Jamison's amendment. We're now going to have the vote on the main motion as amended by all those three amendments. So go ahead and get ready to vote.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Would you like me to put a note on here for the record so that it says the three amendments?
It says, you could say as amended. Same, so yeah, so main motion as amended, then you could just put three in parentheses. Thank you. Okay, town meeting members, you should be on the portal at this point. He's opening the voting now. So if you want to vote for main motion as amended, form a committee, you'll vote yes. If you don't want the committee, you'll vote no. If you can't vote either way, use the chat feature or call Ms. Brazil. Seven eight one three one six three oh seven one. Please take a moment and go ahead and vote on the portal. As soon as we get the thumbs up, we'll close voting. Okay, we can close voting. And we have formed a committee by final vote of 230 in the affirmative and six in the negative. And that ends voting on that article. It's a vote and I sort of clear it that ends article 20 and brings us to 21. Seeing as it's three minutes to 11, I'm going to now call for any notices of reconsideration. If anyone wants to reconsider any of the articles which we have voted on so far this evening, and they voted on the prevailing side, now is your chance to go ahead and file one of those motions for reconsideration. Can we open the raised hand feature on the Zoom? If you want to give us some notice of reconsideration, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom to get my attention. Otherwise, while we wait for that, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn until Monday. We have a motion to adjourn. And Ms. Brazil?
Second.
Second. It's been seconded. It's also by Mr. Oh, Mr. Warden has a point of order right before we adjourned. What's your point of order, Mr. Warden? Let's bring John's point of order. You want to unmute, Mr. Warden? You can go ahead.
I do. John Warden precinct aid. I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, but every time we get to that crucial moment, now's the time to vote. My screen says unable to connect or something. Now, this has happened six times tonight. And I, well, I want, well, yeah, but the meeting's adjourned now. You know, I've wanted to vote yes. I, you know, I never miss votes in town meeting, but I've not been allowed to vote tonight.
Oh, I have seen a few of your votes. We're going to have to get to the bottom of it because a lot of people had that database error.
Well, that shouldn't, and when this Brazil, I know she, you know, there ought to be more than one line there because every time I call it, it rings busy. It did get through once. Every other time it's been busy. But obviously, everybody's calling the same number. She can only take one call at a time. They've got many phones in that office. There ought to be, if the computer system is so bad, it doesn't let people vote the way it's designed to, like it did last fall. Then there ought to be more people on the phones.
Well, we're going to explore that over the next three days and we'll have a response by Monday when we meet next.
Well, no, I don't think I'd have my vote recorded after. I suppose I can't have my vote recorded now that.
I don't think so. We've already closed voting and I don't, I don't want to be opening up the official records and going back.
I can understand that, Mr. Moderator, but I still think it's, I still think until every, everyone who wants to vote has, has been given that opportunity, voting should not be closed.
Well, that's, that's the problem. I don't know if someone hasn't voted yet unless there's we're going to have to explore this issue, Mr. Warden, and we'll have a better answer few on Monday.
Well, Mr. Moderator, I asked that you not close voting until we manage to vote.
But there's no way for me to know you haven't, Ms. Ms. Warden, there's no way for me to know you have not voted until afterwards, when I get a point of order request.
I thought, I mean, when my vote is cast, you don't know that it's cast.
I can see, I can see your vote cast.
But if it isn't cast, then maybe I wasn't able to cast it. I mean, that, that's, that's been the reason tonight.
Well, please let us, let us explore this issue. And we'll get back to you on Monday.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. It's been seconded. All in favor? If you're opposed, please use the racing and feature on Zoom. Seeing none, everyone have a good weekend. We'll see you Monday and hopefully we'll have some answers about the database connection issues. Okay, thank you all very much. Have a good weekend. Goodbye. Well, wait, Terrence Marshall has a point of order. Mr. Marshall, what's your point of order?
And thank you, Mr. Moderator, Terrence Marshall precinct five. In order to resolve the issue that the gentleman from, from precinct aid has had, would it be possible for the, for the for the town clerk to, to receive votes via text? And I yield back, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Uh, no, because that's an office phone number. It's a hard, it's a landline that's getting called, so she's not able to get text. But let us explore this issue over the next few days and we'll have some resolution hopefully on Monday. Thank you all very much. Good night.